Thank you, everyone, for showing up, especially on such short notice. I know this is not normal. This is a special board meeting, but with the things that are going on, with the treatments we have coming up, we felt it was important for us to have a meeting in person, in addition to all the things we're doing on the website and on social media, to keep everyone informed of the current activities and allow you an opportunity to dialogue with us on it. So I'd like to introduce a couple of guests that we have here tonight. In addition to our normal board members, we have Greg Thomas. He is the general manager of the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. And Chris Stransky, to my right, your left, is with GEI. They are the experts that we've been, we have mutually been hiring to advise and give us counsel on what to do with this growing golden algae issue. So with that, can we verify quorum, please?
Director Dordy.
Here.
Director Medbed. President Manblee.
Here.
Hearing three, Quorum Met.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, we're going to begin with the presentation. How many people have already seen the information online? Can I see a raise? Okay. So most people have seen it. I know we have people tuning in online. We're going to go through a presentation first and give you an update because there is some news that has been late breaking. And then we'll allow you to ask questions. So anyone in here, if you have a question, just raise your hand. We'll line up and we'll answer any questions that anyone has. If you are online, we would like you to, and you're on Zoom, we'd like you to use the chat feature. If you have any questions, feel free to submit that in and we will answer those questions as they come. Is there anything else I'm missing? Okay, great. With that, Eric, you want to lead us off with the details of the golden algae treatment, please?
Sure, and I'm, we have a few slides here. Some of this is repeat information that's already been in our social media. Some of it's updated as of today. We did, we were originally shooting for an application this week. The latest is, the material is actually coming tomorrow. We're still gonna, we're still gonna shoot for starting the application on Monday. I'm not going to read all these slides. These are, this whole presentation is available on, if you go to our website on the splash page, there'll be a link. You can click on the cover page of our website and download this presentation or read it. You can follow along on your phone if you're in the audience. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna read word for word here. We'll just kind of summarize through this and then kind of get to people's questions. So as most of you know, the Canyon Lake P O A and the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District are partnering to conduct a chelated copper algicide treatment, starting Monday, November 3rd. We're doing this to help reduce the increasing presence of golden algae and support the overall health of the lake.
So Eric, I want to emphasize one point, and that is, from the initial release, we were talking about starting this week, which would have closed it through the weekend. So now just confirming that the lake will be open through Sunday. So it'll be available this weekend, which is nice, given the warm weather for some people. But also, I know there was a witches and warlocks that they traditionally go out for a paddle on Halloween, and so the lake will be open for them as well.
So yeah, that's the good news. The witches and warlocks can still paddleboard. Okay, so the latest information, which is fresh this afternoon, we've had conversations with GEI and with the applicator, and they have spoken with the manufacturer of the algicide, which is SE Pro. And they, based on our current conditions, instead of, we had originally said we were going to do treatments, a treatment now and then another treatment in two weeks. They have decided that the best strategy for our, all of our conditions are, for East Bay, we're going to start on Monday, and we're going to do a surface application. This product, the recommendation is to treat 50% of the lake's surface at any one time. And correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but that is to not adversely affect the dissolved oxygen levels?
That's true. You don't want to kill everything all at once. And so they do this based on volume. So you're treating 50% of the volume at any given time. So the copper is pretty effective at immediately getting, killing algae. But if you kill it all at one time, it can suck up the dissolved oxygen as it dies and sinks to the bottom. So that's why they do half and half. And the original treatment was going to be spread apart two weeks, but because of the volume of the lake and the depth, and also the fact we did see algae both at the surface and the deeper parts of the lake, the manufacturer recommended going ahead and doing a surface treatment and just following it up the very next day. That'd be the 50%, that'd be the top, and then following it up the very next day with a deeper treatment where you actually inject the copper algicide deeper in the water column.
Right, so Monday will be the, in East Bay will be the surface treatment. They're currently planning a second boat to also start on Main Lake, the same day on Monday, with a surface treatment. And then, like Chris said, on Tuesday in East Bay, they will come right back and do a subsurface treatment with a pipe in the water, basically 10 or 12 feet below. So the first day will be in Main Lake and East Bay will be the top of the water column treatment. And Tuesday, at least in East Bay, will be a subsurface treatment, treating the bottom of the water column. Main Lake may be two days for the surface and two days for the bottom of the water column. That's yet to be determined, but we'll update people as the process develops. We're not quite a week, or a little less than a week away, but this, this modified strategy came out this afternoon. So we wanted to give you the best information. East Bay should take two days and Main Lake will probably take four days total. So right now, we're conservatively saying members should expect the lake to be closed Monday, November 3rd through Sunday, November 9th. And again, we can update that. If they go faster, we will announce what we know when we know it. And then, Chris, maybe you could talk a little bit about the product we're using?
Sure. Yeah, the cop, the product is called Cutrine Plus. It's a chelated copper algicide. So the main component that's active is copper itself. It's a treatment that's used worldwide, ponds, lakes, aquariums, golf courses. So it's very commonly used to get rid of parasites and algae as well. And the concentrations that will be used, and I should point out that there are a list of other chemicals that have been considered or entertained and so forth, but this chemical is considered, been found to be most effective, particularly for the golden algae, which is our biggest concern right now because of its effect on the fish. So from the studies that have been performed, that's one of the reasons. You might have heard of peroxide treatments or other treatments too. There are some that are more expensive, some of them that may or may not work as well with this particular species. So that was the purpose for using the copper. Again, it's widely used. There is a permit in place for it. And let's see, it can kill both filamentous algae and the cells, algae cells themselves. The concentration that's going to be used is going to be somewhere in the range of .2 to 1 part per million in the lake. That's enough to kill the algae at a long duration. You might find that that's a concentration that could affect some fish if they were exposed to that continuously, but it's going to get mixed and diluted pretty quickly. Want to have a good enough dose to make sure it really hits that algae as it is. The concentrations that are being used as well, just for comparison purposes, are below a concentration that's considered acceptable for drinking water. So humans just aren't as affected as much by the copper as some of the aquatic organisms. So it is safe. As far as contact, there's not a concern with getting the water, you know, touching the water, or even if you did drink it. I wouldn't suggest it, but there's still, you know, having a 72 hours period just to let things settle and mix is still a good practice, basically. But it's not because the copper itself is going to be dangerous to humans. What else is on there? I think that's it. It's being produced by a company called SePro. They've been around for quite a while, and they actually do a lot of R and D research. They have a facility that does the analytical chemistry work as well. So they're really well known. So we're very comfortable with the supplier of the material. And the company Aqua Technics is going to be deploying this. So you may see their boats out there deploying the copper as well. You'll probably see the water color change, hopefully fairly quickly. It should clear up because it kills not just the golden algae, but it'll, it'll kill other algae species that are out there. And it is considered, it is using a dose, again, that is considered safe for fish species as well. It's targeting the algae as well. It is, comes in a very concentrated solution. So if you see it on the boat, it's going to be in a container and it's going to look blue because there's that much copper in it. It gets mixed and it's going to get injected with injectors sprayed on the surface for the first day, as mentioned. And then there's going to be injectors that push it down deeper. They'll have a pipe that brings it down to a deeper depth on the subsequent days for the deeper exposure. Okay, any questions on the copper algicide itself? Okay. Great.
Okay, next slide. And why are we doing this now? Over the past two decades, golden algae have become a growing issue in the Western United States. We, as you know, we had our first bloom this past spring and a significant fish mortality. We disposed of 28 tons of dead fish. And we, as the, as the temperatures warmed up, the bloom kind of resolved itself. And we were hoping to be back to normal, and now as the water, as the, as all the the water temperature and the air temperature have cooled down, there's still cysts in the lake that can bloom when the conditions are right, and that's what's happening now. Our, our, we were, over a period of about three weeks, we watched the golden algae cell count increase. And it's at a level now where to protect remaining fish, we collectively feel that we should treat it. This way, we will know in our body of water what effect this has on the current bloom, how long it takes for the toxins to go away, and protecting the fish life that's left in the lake. We did recently do an acoustic fish study just in East Bay, which showed that there were 2,300, at least 2,300 fish, according to the study, living in East Bay, which, which means to us that there's something worth protecting. And we definitely want the lake to be healthy again and to create a healthy, growing fish population, since that's a major asset to us here. The next slide talks about, you already got that, the fish study, 2,300 fish in East Bay. Chris talked about is copper harmful to fish and will it affect the lake environment? I think we've covered that. We're using chelated copper rather than copper sulfate and more effective and a safer application. Next slide is, is this treatment safe for other wildlife that uses the lake? And Chris also covered that. It's a, it's a very diluted dosage. And one, one example we heard was that, I think it was, there's one milligram of copper typically in a one-a-day vitamin. And we're, the application rates that we're using are, I've been told, are equate to one milligram per liter. So it's a very low dosage of copper. Should be very effective on algae and not harmful to humans or fish. And next slide is how long will the lake be closed to body contact? The latest information we have as of today, basically, our plan was to close the lake during and 72 hours following the application. And so right now, members should plan for the lake to be closed November 3rd through Sunday, November 9th. And depending on how fast they get through East Bay and how fast they get through Main Lake, we will update the community, but I would say plan for the lake to be closed from Monday through Sunday of next week. And then we hear a lot that, we heard a lot during the bloom and the last fish kill is this golden algae bloom due to the alum treatment. And we feel that's extremely unlikely. Alum is used to remove nitrogen and phosphorus that enter the lake after rainfall. Blue-green algae thrive in nutrient-rich conditions. Golden algae, however, produce cysts that settle at the bottom of the lake and bloom when environmental conditions such as lower water temperatures are favorable. So you can't say with certainty that it, it, there wasn't some effect because of the alum treatment, but everybody involved feels that's extremely unlikely. And maybe you can talk about this. Will, will this treatment prevent future golden algae blooms? I refer to the scientist here.
Yes, well, so it is, as, yeah, as Eric mentioned, it's going to kill the algae itself. I should point back to that, one of the reasons for that 72 hours is that the algae is dying and they're breaking apart. So if they do have toxins in, then they'll have toxins that could be released in the water temporarily too. So that's just another reason to close the lake down for a little while, not so much the copper itself. The copper will attack those algae cells, the living cells and so forth. It's, the challenge that we have with golden algae everywhere is that they do produce these cysts, and they're pretty resistant to much anything. In fact, they can be dry, you can put them outside and let them dry out for a long period of time and they'll still survive. So the hope is that, you know, this knocks this down, prevents it from blooming further into an exponential bloom, and will hopefully mitigate future blooms. It's an unknown completely. It's worked in some lakes. And in other places, it hasn't been successful or any treatments, really. So we're taking action to make sure that we do something. And this is from all of the research that's out there. We're also consulting with, his name's Dr. David Karen at USC. He's an expert in this as well. Talking to a lot of experts on the best possible, best approach and do something that we think is going to be effective. So again, no guarantee, but we want to nip it in the bud right now, and let's go from there. We're going to be taking, doing a lot of monitoring right before, during, and after the, the application to evaluate the effect of it on the cells themselves and also toxicity. Doing laboratory tests in the lab to look at tox, fish tests using small fish. So we'll be keeping a close eye on it. And yeah.
Then another question we frequently hear is when will we restock the lake? And the simple answer to that is, we will consider restocking the lake once we know what the results of this treatment are and we measure the results of the treatment. And we will probably do another fish survey to see what the fish population is at that time. And once we're confident that golden algae cells and toxins are no longer present, then we will entertain the idea of restocking the lake. And who is paying for this treatment? The cost of the lake treatment will be shared between the Canyon Lake P O A and EVMWD with additional tech, technical expertise provided by our third-party consultants, Chris and John Rudolph from GEI. Lesua has been involved in these conversations. Greg's team at EVMWD has been involved. Their permit was updated with the state water board. This has been a many months-long process with the applicator Aqua Technics, who does our alum treatment, is also going to be applying this algicide. And so there's a lot of very professional water people involved in this whole process and literally daily conversations for the last four or five months. And I think now we can probably open up for questions.
Before we do that, Greg, anything you want to add to the commentary?
No, I think, thank you for allowing me to be up here. Again, I can answer questions, et cetera, but it is, this is unique. This is, is, as Chris and GEI and the experts have said, I mean, golden algae is normally a seawater-based algae, correct? Yeah, you're found predominantly in seawater, cold things. So for it to come into, into the lake is kind of a unique. So we, we've used all the experts we can. We've reached out to other third parties. I know GEI is here, definitely their expertise, but we've even reached out to Metropolitan Water District, who manages multiple reservoirs that provides a lot of our drinking water. And just seeing what they've, they've dealt with this. They deal with other algies, but they've got PhDs on staff as well as other folks too, that have been giving us some advice throughout this whole process. And somebody that we can go back and go, hey, what do you think about this? Give me some experience. So they have assisted other sister agent, water agencies with similar situations of golden algae or other algae. So, no, it's been time to do this. It's, you know, a little surprise that we anticipated it, but it coming up this early in the fall, we expect a little bit later in the late fall, early spring, to be honest with you. But, so no, we're, we're going to, we're going to address it as a team, and we've been in communications the entire time. And I don't know how many hours we've all spent on Zoom calls and meetings, et cetera, but it's important. And that's the main important thing is, it's extremely important to all of us, not only for us, your, your residents. You know, you belong to the P O A, but you also are customers and our residents. So from that aspect, it's not like any of that, we're all in this together. And that's really the approach we've been taking. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. And I want to emphasize that, you know, whenever you have a crisis, and this has really been a crisis. It's the first time it happened in Canyon Lake. As Eric said, a significant fish kill, 28 tons were disposed of, so it was substantial. And, and it required an all-hands-on-deck approach. And so thank you, Greg and Chris and everyone for their partnership, Lesua, for all of the entities. Pretty much any expert we could get our, we could get involved. We got involved and they've, they've come to the table to give us the best advice we can to, to address the situation and remediate it. So with that, does anyone in the audience have any questions? If you do, please raise your hand. Great, come on forward, tell us your name and ask a question. If anyone else would like to, feel free to start lining up if you have multiple questions.
Hi, my name is Jim Lang. I read something about a possibility of a lake turnover. And my question is, does this application, will a lake turnover have any effect on the application?
Yeah, great question, because this time of year, we do the lake turns over, right, fall and spring. And so, Chris, tell us what the current status is.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So through the summer, there's a thermocline that develops. And so you have cooler water down at the bottom and anoxic conditions, so no DO really. And at the top, you have oxygen and so forth. And the spring and the fall, right around now, actually, is what we call a flip in the lake. The, the water gets mixed and some of that water that's down at the bottom with low DO. And sometimes you'll smell sulfides in there too. It's anoxic. Will come up and mix to the surface, and that can cause temporary fish kills. So the shad are usually the first ones that are affected with the low DO. Generally, it's a pretty short-lived event. And so this treatment, though, really shouldn't have any implication with regard to that. Timing-wise, though, it's somewhat coincidental when we're trying to do this. There could be some, right now, actually, right now, the East Bay, East Bay is, or east part of the lake, east arm, is mixed already. So it's top to bottom pretty uniform. But the deeper part, the main base of the lake, is still stratified. We just had our crew out there last week, and so it's getting closer to mixing. And that is something, there could be some fish that, if they're affected by low DO, that could be affected. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on too. And we're going to have water quality meters as well with us as we do our monitoring. We'll be able to kind of keep an eye on that. But that's a good question. But the copper treatment is kind of independent of that, you know?
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, I'm Kathy Blake-Moore, former science teacher and have always enjoyed with my students observing a lot of the microscopic invertebrates. And that's my concern is that moving up the food chain, that the algae is a part of, very important part of the base of the food chain for the microscopic invertebrates, which then feed our fish. So even though this algicide won't necessarily kill the fish, I'm concerned and want to know your opinion on the impact of the loss of the microscopic invertebrates because they're not getting their food.
Yeah. No, that's a really good question, and that is one of the negative effects of the, any kind of chemical treatment. And so every treatment option out there has some pluses and minuses. The invertebrate community that's in the sediments and in places that are a little more protected should generally be okay, but the copepods and zooplankton will potentially be affected from the copper, you're right. And so they're, the, generally, they can, they come back pretty darn quickly, though, as long as there's a population. They also produce cysts as well, so they can have a period that's pretty resistant to the copper treatments. So you're right, though, you will see a decrease in zooplankton in addition to the algae. But they generally, from past experience in other lakes, they tend to come back pretty quickly. So.
Richard Blay. Richard Blay. Hopefully, this is not a dumb question, but do we know how the, the golden algae got here? And the follow-up is, is this something that Lesua is at all monitoring, how it comes down the river into, into us?
So there is a monitoring program Lesua runs that's for the TMDL monitoring, regulatory compliance. And so actually, every winter, water samples are collected from Salt Creek, San Jacinto River, and also monitoring is done regularly, both here in Lake, Canyon Lake, and also Lake Elsinore. We're not looking at algae species, though, in those. We're looking at chemistry, mostly nutrients, and general water quality parameters. So we don't actually know, you know, what kind of algae cells are coming down at any given time. There was a fish kill in Menifee Lakes in 2014, and it was attributed to golden algae. So they did find golden algae up there that's upstream. So it's probably been around for a long time. There was a golden algae bloom in Lake Elsinore too, in about, was it 2017, after the holy fire? And it was very temporary. It just came and went. So something triggered it, change in the water quality. We think that one was due to the flooding and a rapid change in the water quality, where it went from green to brown overnight, basically. And then the golden algae just took advantage of these conditions, but it died, died off quickly. So it's probably been around and it's probably been in Canyon Lake for a long time. But we just are trying to, everyone's trying to figure out what is the actual trigger that's, that's caused it to bloom. And there's indications that this is a different strain. I was talking to Dr. David Karen about it. They're doing some genetic, trying to do some genetic work. There's strains that started really in Texas, and those species or that strain tends to be less tolerant of warmer conditions. And so we were thinking, last time we saw this, we'd see it die off faster, but it hung around in there. And they've noticed that in some other Southern California lakes, that it seems to be more resistant, a little bit different strain than, than what we've seen. So, but, anyway, did I answer your question okay, I guess? Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we could talk about that as something to look at in the water. Now, what we're monitoring generally is stormwater runoff, so it's big flush that happens pretty quickly. Would there be algae cells in there that we could identify? Yeah, we don't, I don't know the answer, but we could always entertain that, bring that to the table, for sure. Yeah, it's a good question.
Hi, Steve Buckley. Have a few questions, but really appreciate the thoughtful presentation. It looks like you've been thinking through this, so I applaud that. Compared to where we were last spring, when it was kind of panic time and everybody was highly concerned, but we still haven't fixed the problem. I get it. This sounds like the most appropriate approach. But I guess the question is with the copper treatment, I know back in the spring, it was discussed that that was potentially very damaging. That's what happened at Mission Viejo, some of the other regional lakes. Is it the same treatment? Have we considered that? So how is, how did we arrive at this treatment and how are we going to prevent from the significant damage that caused to other regional lakes?
Yeah, I'll comment on that. The, in the spring, we, when it first happened, we did try and consult with everybody else that had this situation, and they did have this condition in Lake Mission Viejo. Like Mission Viejo used copper sulfate, which is much more caustic. And they used it in a much higher concentration that has resulted in the significant damage that they've had. We've actually had their scientists here in Canyon Lake, and so they're collaborating with us. And it was through their experience and GEI that, that the joint recommendation was made to use chelated copper, which disperses a lot. which disperses a lot better and binds in the lake water system. So, so that's how we got there. Do you want anything to that, Chris?
Yeah, no, that's, that's true. Yeah, so chelated copper is a little bit more stable and more targeted. Again, all chemical treatments will have some negative implications, as we talked about. It's, you know, they're not super selective, they're going to kill anything that's sensitive to a certain concentration. So, and yeah, I mean, based on all of the research that's been done, other treatments just haven't been found to be productive or successful with golden algae. So we're up against a tough one with this species, for sure.
Chris, Chris, isn't the other part of it though, by taking intervention now? We don't have to use a blast approach, we don't have to use it so drastically, kind of early intervention. I don't know about nipping it in the bud, but the sooner you act, the less you have to use and, and dosing. And therefore, the potential negative impacts are more limited than waiting, hoping. And then it flares in a big bloom, and then we're left where we were last spring, and our interventions have to be tenfold.
Got it, okay.
I think that's, yeah, trying to avoid what happened last time and, and, you know, get it to knock, knock it down now, so it doesn't keep growing.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that we're kind of trying to get ahead of it as best as.
So the one thing I'd like to add to this is there are no guarantees. We're doing the best we can. Southern California has been hit by multiple instances of golden algae. And many communities are actually responding and trying to figure out the best thing to do. I think the board responded quickly. We're taking proactive action based on the expert advice that we have, and there are no guarantees. Is that fair?
I guess it's fair, yeah. I mean, let's just hope it doesn't, I mean, but we're pretty confident we're not going to kill off the rest of the fish in the lake.
Yeah, we're confident that the copper is not going to kill the fish in the lake, yeah. So the, the treatment and the concentrations that are being used will be, the fish will be fine with regard to copper. There, again, one of the things I mentioned, the copper, again, is going to kill the algae. The other thing that isn't really well-known about the golden algae and other algae species is that sometimes they're producing toxins, but not always. If they're producing toxins and you kill them and break them apart, they're going to release toxins too. So that's been a, you'll, you know, that's another potential effect, but these are temporary. It's, you know, as opposed to having the population continue to grow and then release toxins. You know, you have a much worse situation at that point in time. Mission Viejo is still a really unique, interesting lake. I don't know, it's really perplexing that they have not been able to, you know, recover, to be honest, in that lake. We're trying to learn a little bit more about what they've been doing and what's going on there as well. They haven't been using like certified labs to do some of the monitoring that they're doing and so forth. They've been, you know, so we're kind of jumping in there to see what we can do to learn a little bit more about what's actually going on there too. Because that'll help us understand what's happening here.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they control their water in source where we don't.
Right, yeah.
That's a big difference. We have the watersheds, which we don't control what's coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the, you estimated the number of fish in the East Bay. Is there, what percentage of that compared to the prior population is that? Are we 10% prior population, 50%? Any?
We don't know, we didn't do a survey beforehand, so we don't really know. The good news is, there have been lots of reports that there, the East Bay is dead, there are no fish. And we at least can, can say that that is not true, based on the acoustic survey that was done. And, and the lake does, has appeared during the summer to start coming back. We have seen small bass, we've seen other, other fish come back. So the lake, the lake does have health, and we want to do help that recover, so.
Can you share the cost of the treatment?
Cost of the treatment is $353,000.
$353?
$353,000.
And how is that being shared with Water District? Is that an equal share?
The, the Water District is, is, has stepped up and is paying $100,000 of that. And, and we're, we're working together. We also have to use their permit in order to do the job. This cannot be done without their full involvement and their, their permits, because they're the only ones that have permits to do this. So it really is a partnership, no matter how you, how you slice it. It takes all, it takes us all to, to solve the problem.
Yeah, assuming the board feels that's equitable. To me, it seems like, you know, the P O A pays for the surface rights, the Water District pays for the lake and the management of the lake. It seemed like that should be flipped to be equitable, but.
So the board met on an emergency meeting, and we voted manishly to do this. Because we think it's the right thing to do today. We'll learn more based on the testing, we'll go forward and make the next best decisions we can.
Okay, just ask the board to seek for more equitable sharing as we go into the future on this.
Your comments registered, thank you.
It's a valid question.
Use the chair, that's what it's for, right? Joe Comation, what a difficult decisions you've had, guys have had to make. I appreciate you guys putting the time and effort into studying this and protecting the community from any further or worse conditions that we might be facing. I lost my notes here, oh, here they are, okay. I've been in the community for 36 years. And over those years, every year, we, we know the Water District has always used that for drinking water and has taken millions of gallons out of the lake, which is a part of the process. We all knew that our lake levels went down every summer or later into the summer. And then either the rain or they purchased water to replenish that. And to me, that's, that works as kind of a filtering system as well. And is there any thought or consideration to whether that lack of water usage and dropping the lake level has had any effect or cause on this? Because I know the plant is out of commission until another year or two, I think? Four years, four years, four years, okay. So I'd just like to know if that's something that could or maybe is directly responsible for the water condition being more susceptible to golden algae?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's a good question, and I don't think that is a really good answer, unfortunately. It's really difficult to know without some kind of real thorough study of before, after. What are the different changes in the water quality parameters that that might have resulted in? We don't see anything in the water quality that looks abnormal compared to historic data. Been doing monitoring on the lake for more than a decade, and even before then, there was monitoring. So there's nothing that stands out with any given condition. We see changes, the biggest changes we see really are from runoff events. You have a lowering of the conductivity, a change in the pH, and, you know, new water coming into the lake and mixing. But with regard to the water used or not, you know, for treatment through the plant, that's a really tough question. I don't, I don't expect it to be a big issue that's causing a specific trigger, because we just don't see any other water quality parameters that seem to be, you know, showing us something.
What, Joe, was that your actual question, though? I guess, Chris, that's what I'm.
Oh, did I answer it?
I'm not sure, because I think, Chris, what you were asking is if there, if there had been more circulation of the water, would that have helped to reduce either the actual event or the significance of the event of the algae?
Correct, or, or just made us more vulnerable to the golden algae.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, yeah, wouldn't know the, you know, couldn't say for sure one way or the other at all on that. But circulation is good. Again, you know, when you get rain events, and you also think of an aquarium, right? You have a pump on there circulating the water and so forth. So, you know, water circulation is definitely beneficial to most lakes and reservoirs.
Yeah, so, yeah, the plant has been down. You know, of course, we had a PFAS in the, in the lake that was above the limits. So, you know, the plant was older, so we were redesigning it and we're going to rebuild it anyways. But I think too, the last couple of years, we've had some significant rain, rain events and Canyon, excuse me, Lake Elsinore, you know, with the dam spilling, there has been some flow-through of water. And so at this point, Lake Elsinore is at some of its highest levels over the last couple of years because of the rain events and the overflows from the, from the dam. So I think there has been a positive movement of, you know, water through the lake. But again, that's a question, it's something we would have to study. And maybe that's something we start looking at, you know, or putting to some. We're going to be doing some long-term plans or, or studies and stuff with, with Canyon Lake and Lesua and what we're doing. And we're going to be working on some long-term, short-term, midterm type of plans related to this and what we're going to do next. So I hope that helps you answer the, Joe.
No, that's great, and, and I'm not against the plant. I, I just want to see it open as soon as we can, for, for everybody's benefit.
Yeah.
And I just, I just was curious if that might have had an effect, which if it, if it's back on service in four years, then.
You've, you've been on this side of the table before, one of the biggest enemies of fact is social media. One of the biggest enemies of fact is social media. Social media, Facebook, right? You see so many theories go out there and not supported by the experts. You know, so, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is get better at, you know, making sure the message that goes out there. Because I've seen, you know, Facebook posts say, yeah, aeration's great, aeration's not great, we put it in Bear Lake. And so our, our situation is very unique. And I support the people that are doing the research, trying to figure out what's right for our community and our lake. Because it doesn't apply to everything that's going on in Southern California, even though there is a trend. Was it Laguna, Laguna Niguel?
Well, there was Mission Viejo, that's happened wrong.
There's several lakes that have had problems in Southern California, and they're all unique ecosystems.
And I appreciate that, and I agree with you about social media, and that's why I'm here and not on social media. And that's why these folks are here and not on social media, so we can get the facts and, and hopefully share them with others, so.
And I don't think anybody could argue against the fact that if the plant was able to be up, it would be a positive factor. I don't think anybody can argue against that. Now, it's not going to be, but that's the reality.
And that, and that item, again, the plant only runs, was part-time. So the plant only ran for six months out of the year, through the winter time, when we had the majority of the water. So what, what it could or couldn't do, you know, that's right now, again, a summation or, or a poss, you know, assumption type of thing. So again, it, we wouldn't really have the data to understand exactly what those impacts were on, on the lake. This is a unique lake, it's, you know, a drinking water reservoir. And if you go to any other drinking water reservoir in the state, Diamond Valley, you're allowed to boat and fish, you're no body contact. And this has full recreational abilities. So it, it challenges, and I think with the changing climate, the climatic conditions, et cetera, I think those may, and again, that's G E Is and all of our, what we're going to really try to understand is what are, what are those impacts that are changing in the climate now, having on, on the, the lake? Because it's a living organism, and, and it's a great question related to the, you know, what, what affects algae? And it's all part of the food chain, so those are all good questions.
Yeah, well, I, I certainly understand, and it's, it's a challenge just to figure out the future. And if this is one little piece of the future that will be enforced, it'll be in effect four years from now, it might lighten the load on the, on the community and on the lake. So one quick follow-up, you mentioned price, and I didn't quite hear if you said the total cost of this project?
Total cost is $353,000.
Shared by $100,000.
$100,000, and I want to add a little more context on that too. Again, the recreation, I mean, from the Water District standpoint, there, I mean, it's, the water is owned by the, by the Water District. And, and they have the ability that when it's needed to use it, they can process and they can do all this processing inside. Recreate, we, we lease it for recreational and, and using in the fish habitat is part of the recreation, right? And so, so overall, so we as a board met, and we felt, we felt regardless, based on what happened in the spring, that this is something we, we feel strongly that we need to support. And the cost, being that cost, we're going to do it. And that impact to each home is $50, is $50. Given the fact that we had dead fish on the, on the shorelines, we had stinky, we had stinky water, we had brown water. And when, when guests were coming out, it was, we felt it was a very small price for us to pay to be able to do it. Because we felt if we don't, it's impacting our housing prices. And that's fundamentally one of our, one of our primary responsibilities is, is watching out for the property values of our residents. So that's, that's how, how it was largely part of the criteria that we used when we came to that conclusion.
And, and I appreciate that, and I, I personally fully support your decision to go forward with it and, and appreciate the Water District's involvement, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Are there more? Come on forward.
And if I could add some context to, the last fish kill with the, the consultant cost and the testing costs and the, the fish cleanup and the dump fees, we probably spent close to $75,000 on the last fish kill. And so I think the board considered that when they decided to, to fund this. There is, there is a cost to having a massive fish kill like we did last time.
Yeah, there's a cost of not doing something.
There's a cost of not doing something, right? And then I'd also like to say, there's, there's people watching on Facebook Live and on Zoom. And Andre and I are monitoring those questions. So if people watching from home have questions, please put them in the chat or in the comments on Facebook. One of the questions we got was, what is the cost? So that's been answered, but if you're at home on Zoom, feel free to send us a question in chat.
Yeah, I'm Steve Oski, resident of East Bay, former bass fisherman. I want to get together with you later on about that fish finder, I'll trade you mine, I'm not coming up with 2300. It's a deal, though. Now, I want to ask you about, how confident are you that, you know, we're blessed with the North Lake right now? And then the ski jump, it's held face throughout this whole process. How confident are we that the North Lake is not going to get contaminated? Do we need to do something proactive? How does it get contaminated? I mean, fish went back and forth, you know, between the tubes, between the North Lake and the Main Lake. Do we have any concern, or is there something we can do?
Right, yeah, the, the blessing there is the water is coming in, and so it's getting flushed. Now algae can move up, you're talking about the north.
The north slalom course.
Right, yeah, and there's still good fishing up there, from what I hear?
Not as good as it was, but it's, you know, like I say, the 2300 fish, I'm still looking for them.
Yeah, well.
It's, it's, it's a blessing, it, it's softened up some, but at least the club was able to hold some tournaments there during the night. And it, you know, there were quality fish up there, and the fish that, you know, we do catch, they're good-looking fish.
Yeah.
But like I say, what, what risk do we have, or is there a risk?
Yeah, I think there's still a bigger risk of probably doing nothing, really. I mean, this is, you know, again, to try to knock that algae down, no matter what part of the lake it's in. They, you know, algae is going to move with the currents, and where things go, fish go where they want to go. Interesting, the, the fish actually sense the golden algae toxin, so they'll actually move away from it, which is kind of interesting behaviorally, it's a neurotoxin. They, and then go back to your survey, or I'm back to the, yeah, the depth sounder, the acoustic survey. These aren't perfect, as you know, this is, you know, basically fish finder technology, it's tied into BioBase and using software and, you know, whatever to give you the best possible picture. But, you know, the best way to do it is get out there with nets or, you know, whatever.
We kind of talked about, we have no benchmark, we talked about what we saw the 2300, we don't know where we were when we started.
Right.
Good, but would we consider electrofishing, shocking, what we always called shocking? It got a new name for it now, I guess, called electrofishing.
Yeah.
Is that something that we consider? Because I think that's really the only way to tell what kind of population you have.
Yeah, that was actually done, oh, seven or eight years ago in Canyon Lake, so we participated in that. So that is a technique that can be used for a more accurate assessment, for sure. This was done as for quickness, as quick as we could, you know, do we think there's anything out there, yes or no? Well, it was mostly a yes or no, like, is there something? They came back with numbers on the, you know, from what the software and the, the finder was providing. You do have to still go back and verify things like that. So the other thing that, there's been reports of fish being caught here and there. Fish Brain is an app that some people are using and reporting a fish catch caught here and there. I don't know how accurate those are either, you know, to be honest.
You, you can face this side, you know, the Main Lake side, the Causeway, North Causeway, and you can pick up a decent fish. But it's a one-off.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just one came through the tunnel, see what's going on, and, you know, go back. When he finds out he can't breathe, he turns around, goes back to ski, or, or.
Are there any further questions? Sorry, I might have a wrong discussion about bass, I'd like to get to the other. Are there any further questions? Sorry. I don't have a wrong discussion about bass. I'd like to get to the other questions.
Like I say, we're blessed with the North Lake. I appreciate what you guys are doing. We're way ahead of where we were when we started these meetings months ago.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thanks.
Eric, any other online questions?
First of all, since that, the North Lake and the Jump Lagoon came up, we are not planning. Those, as you indicated, have stayed pretty healthy on their own, mostly because water's coming in there. And we, we have been doing, there seems to be a lot of confusion about whether we did alum treatments in the North Lake and the Jump Lagoon, and the answer is, yes, we always do that. But the, those two areas were not affected by golden algae, and we are not planning an algicide treatment in either one of those areas either. Just, I know that question will come up.
So they will be open next week?
What's that?
The North Lake will be open next week.
The North Lake will be open next week for any, all of its normal usages. And the only question I see on Facebook, again, was about the cost. That's already been answered. Andre had a question on Zoom. I think the question was, is this a one-time cost or a recurring cost? I think the answer to that is, as of right now, it's a one-time cost. And we're going to do this and, and then evaluate what happens to the lake after this treatment and see how long we go without. Hopefully, we go years without another golden algae bloom. And I think time will tell whether it's a recurring cost or not, or, and, and whether it was worth it.
Okay, no more questions from online? Any others in the audience?
Captain Moore again. Can you tell us about the follow-up testing that you, that is scheduled once the treatment is done?
Yeah. So the, the monitoring, there's actually two different monitoring programs that'll be implemented. One is specific to copper, and it's in support of that permit to make sure that the copper dosage is, you know, properly used. So we'll actually be measuring copper concentrations and hardness and some other physical parameters, pH, D O, conductivity, things like that, before the treatment occurs. And then right after that treatment occurs, during the treatment, actually, within four or five hours of when it's been applied. So worst case, and that'll also be measured again two days later afterwards. So we'll have a concentration of copper that's being used. It'll also be measured up in the north part of the lake as a reference location for comparison purposes, so that's going to happen. The other monitoring is specific to the golden algae. So we're going to be out there taking concentrations, taking samples for golden algae counts. They look at other algae species as well. These are samples that are collected as a grab sample, and they're shipped off to a lab, Action Florida, that does the taxonomy for us. And they're pretty quick. They give us a pretty good turnaround on what they see. They're quantitative, so they calculate the actual density when they give us a result. So that's going to happen forty-eight hours after the copper treatment. We'll also be doing water quality profiles up and down the water column in the, in both parts of the lake, the East Basin and also the Main Basin. And that's going to happen again at ninety-six hours. And so we're going to have self-density counts. We'll be able to look at effectiveness. And then we've been doing some monitoring on just a routine basis, approximately every two weeks, getting out there to do some water quality profiles and collect the samples of the algae to just see what we see out there. So we've been watching this trend more closely. So we've actually put a golden algae monitoring plan together, so we're following that. We should be able to make that available, I would, I would presume. So, good question, though. Yep. We want to keep a close eye on it, for sure.
All right. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight online.
Another question online. Sorry.
Before we close off, let's take the last question.
I had a member who was just saying that, yes, the north ski is good, and that there was just a concern of like, now that people will not be using the, if it doesn't recover, and basically taking their boat to lakes, like on a weekly with the red tag. It's been quite a hassle. Is there any option for garage-only boating if the lake doesn't recover? So basically, they're stating garage the boat to take to other lakes and not use Canyon Lake waters and avoid the stopping and waiting for the red tag when they're coming back and forth at the gates. So. And then any other anticipated costs for fish and habitat restocking, assuming that the lake does recover?
Okay, it sounds like we had multiple questions there. The question, if you take your boat and go to the lake, it does get red tagged, and you have to do it coming back in, especially if it's a boat you can use in here, and that, that is not going to change. We can, we can assess that later on, but right now, the current policy is still going to hold, that if you take your boat elsewhere, it's going to get tagged, and you have to get it checked. And basically, it has to be dry when you come back in. And that's, again, to prevent the transmission of quagga mussels and zebra mussels, which are becoming a growing threat. The second part of the question was?
Is there an anticipated cost for fish and habitat restocking fees, assuming that the lake does recover?
Eric, you want to take that one?
Yeah, we, we budget for restocking the lake in our operating budget every year. Obviously, after the massive fish kill we had last year, we would probably double our efforts to restock when we're confident that the conditions are right. So, so some of the restocking cost is part of our annual operating budget. When we do decide to restock, we will, I'm certain that we will add to that and maybe double the amount we normally stock. But that, when and if that happens is yet to be determined.
Any others?
Nope. The member just said, thank you. He appreciated.
Yeah, we do appreciate. Again, the whole reason we had this forum is because not everyone communicates on either website or social media, so we, while we got the message out that way, we do want to have this opportunity to have a dialogue and, and get the message out to others. So thank you for tuning in. Thank you for those who came. Again, really want to thank Greg and, and Jace is here also from the Water District. Appreciate you guys and your partnership in this. Also, Chris, thank you for coming. And all of you came on such short notice. I know we decided last Tuesday to have this meeting, and everyone's here. So thank you. And also to the staff, this has been a, it's been many months of, of getting, getting familiar with lake water chemistries and, and biologies and everything that goes with it. And appreciate all the hard work that everyone's placed in it. If you haven't had enough of us, next Tuesday, we'll be meeting in the same place at the same time for our regular November board meeting. Until then, I want to wish everyone a happy Halloween for all the witches and warlocks. Enjoy your paddle this, on Friday. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you coming out.